The agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. For our heads.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and if you would please allow me, I would like to give the invocation. Dear Lord, we'd like to thank you for allowing us to gather here tonight and meet on behalf of the town. We'd like to ask for your blessing over this meeting, and we'd like to ask for your guidance and directions and decisions we make tonight. For it's in your name we pray. Amen. All right. Item number three is the approval of the March 25th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to review those. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
I have not.
All right.
And not hearing any additions or corrections, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
All right, we have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
I will second.
Motion and second. All in his favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All righty. On to the next item, Communications. Planning Director's Report.
Good evening. Our traditional item for the Planning Director's Report is to touch base on your previous recommendations. So at your March meeting, you all took a look at 111, 113, and 115 West Young Street. And you also took a look at Hills at Harris Creek, the updated application, new rezoning case. And both of those were recommended for approval, and I don't remember the votes exactly. You probably have them in your minutes right there, but there were dissenting votes on both. And I know one with the West Young Street property, I know there was some concern about the historic home and what was going to happen with that. And then for Hills at Harris Creek, I am not sure about that one. I know when you all looked at it before, there was concern about there being townhomes in the project, and the applicant removed the townhomes and made that all single-family detached housing. One of the reasons they did that was because of your previous recommendation. So we'll see how both of those cases go at the May 7th Town Board Meeting. And I know Mike and possibly Tanner may have something to say about a development process flow chart. A few meetings ago, we talked about creating one, and we're making some progress there. And Mike can come up and share with you where we are.
Good evening. Please allow my connection here to... Can we get the screens up? Wait, no, it's white again. I think it's connecting.
You having Wi-Fi issues too?
Connection to the screen system.
I'm having Wi-Fi issues. Click to share.
There we go. All right. So yes, our new Planner One, Tanner Hazelit, has done a lot of work and research on a little task we gave him to flowchart out the development process, which is something that we mentioned to y'all. It's always been one of our to-do list items, to put a graphic out there that had step-by-step details about the development process. And then when we come to you, we would show you where, you know, your role fits in there, which was generally at the rezoning or annexation, or sorry, annexation, or text amendment to the LDO stage. But also just to have a tool out there for the public to know exactly where things are. And then when you go to the project websites, when you view those, where you see the narratives about what stage a project's at, you could go back to maybe this flowchart and see kind of where things are in the life cycle of any one project. So here, we've done the flowchart, and again, this is a draft right now, but from a top-down type version, where you've got first the policy items. That is not, that is not expressing. I apologize. Give me a second. Let me try this one. Nope. Nope. Should try this one again. All right. All right, try a new one.
Got a mind of his own tonight, right?
Maybe it was that import. There we go. Sorry about that technical difficulty. So again, this is a, this is a vertical or letter-type view of the development process, top-down. First, you have the policy items, annexation, rezonings, development agreements, et cetera. Then you move into the subdivision of land with some scenarios of, is it already a platted lot or has it, does it have to go through the plating process, infrastructure improvements, et cetera. And then you move into permitting for single or two-family, and then site plan, and then permitting for non-residential or commercial projects. So that's kind of the evolution of the development process. And then here's a kind of a horizontal view. There we go. Let me share that wide. There you go. So kind of again, working from the, from left to right here, from the policy side, annexation, comprehensive plan amendment, if that were in play, rezoning, moving into the subdivision of land, those multiple steps, and then into permitting for other residential or non-residential. So again, those are works in progress, and once we have that finalized, we'll be posting that to the website and giving you all either a copy, and then we can look at this through each project that comes before you and explain to you kind of what its evolution will be. Some properties are already a platted lot, so if it's changing the zoning, its next step might be site development plan. They get a building permit to build the building, and they're done, and they're through the process versus a large raw piece of ground that's going through residential rezoning. It's going to go through preliminary subdivision, construction drawings for infrastructure, then all the building permits for every one of those lots. And that, those are projects that last five to 10 years, for instance, so.
So is this going to be kind of in a format of a decision tree then? Because it kind of felt like, when I'm looking at it, I mean, I know it's a work in progress, don't get me wrong, I understand that. But I'm just wondering if, like, the first thing, it starts off with annexation, but not every development project involves annexation.
Correct.
So that's, that's kind of why I'm wondering if it's more of a decision tree than, you know, you don't have to, you know, you don't have to really guess at anything, you could just kind of say, this is a project that's coming in, and you can, like, see how these are all graded out, you could have the decision tree kind of laid out with, and then color each one of them as you get through those processes.
Yeah.
Might be one way of easily, you know, picto, whatever it is, displaying, you know.
Pictographically.
Yeah, 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 whatever those words are. But as a decision tree, it just makes it easier to look at, you know, from a, from a flowing perspective, so you understand where decisions are made, because then with each of those points of decision, you can talk about and highlight who's making those decisions.
Yes.
Whether it's staff, whether it's the planning board, whether it's the Board of Adjustments, whether it's the Town Board.
Okay.
Or what have you. TRC, for example, would be nice to see how those things layer in to the entire process, at least from my perspective, because it would be helpful for me to understand, like, where each of those things.
Yeah.
You know, stand.
I was going to ask that question because I couldn't see it that far away, but is, if, if it had on there noted when the planning board was looking at it, and it is on there, okay.
I'm not sure if it did, but that is something we could definitely do. And like I said earlier, this body will see rezonings and text amendments. Those are the two main processes.
Right.
Those are way earlier, way left on the, left to right, or the top to the bottom type of thing. So as a decision body, that's where this board would fit in. But you got me thinking though, if every project, and that's why I turned to one of these example project webpages. The webpage, as it stands, has this kind of benchmark time period, and this goes, you know, left to right, older to newer benchmarks, and we can populate it with only so much information, but this is like dates and major events, like approvals and so forth. If this were to more mimic that flowchart, then this up there, like, like Mr. Verstegen said, would say the bolded area is where it's at right now.
Yeah.
Everything else prior is grayed out, and everything to come is grayed out, and then boom, that would be. So we will look into, if we can take, kind of take that flowchart-esque as a, as a, maybe a plug-in to the webpage here, and almost replace this, because this is a little, little stale. And it only tells you what, what it allows us to tell, which is things like dates. We can put in the application case number and dates, but that's about it. All right. Well, thank you for that feedback, and we will continue to consider that.
I think what you're saying is kind of shaded as it's, or colored in as it's going along. Gives somebody a good idea to process. Only thing I might would add would maybe be, in the beginning, instead of just saying rezoning, maybe say application, and then you could have it go to a rezoning or to the next plan process, because like he said, not every project will need that rezoning.
That's right, or in this, you know, if a property starts this process in town limits, well, we'd strike through annexation, you know, NA kind of type of thing.
Yep.
That was not applicable to this particular project. Very good feedback. My cohorts are taking notes, that's good. And then the last thing I wanted to show you is, in effort, that's not it. Here it is, this one. We're doing some research to try to get a good grasp and handle on the townhome development that has been proposed in the town, either built, proposed through zoning, approved through zoning, approved through preliminary subdivision, construction drawings, if they're final plating, if they're building lots. So to have a database here that is all of that information, and you start to see that on the screen here, the subdivision name, kind of where it is, what it was approved for, its zoning, and then the stage of development. That's kind of the key thing here. And so you have that rezoning column, preliminary plat, construction, infrastructure drawings, final plat, permit is, et cetera. And so this is, this is going to be a great tool for the town, but it could also be an outward-facing bit of information, because that topic is kind of high right now. So we could grasp a handle now on giving the board, the board, information about where townhomes stand in the town, and then just make decisions based on that, or at least gives us a better tool to track them. Which ultimately, I'd like, love to do this for single-family detached as well, but we kind of felt that jumping on the townhome topic was a little more apt right now. So again, with Tanner's help and his ability to use some of these, these apps here, he's put this together rather rapidly, and we're going to continue to flesh this out, fill this out, and break it down by phases, because we realized that some of these larger projects, they build by phase for multiple years, phase one and then phase two, et cetera. And so to keep track a little more on a micro level as to the phase by phase, because some projects stop for a while, never finish.
That's really good.
So rather than just a, the point, which has 800 approvals or more for dwelling units, you know, we're going to break that down by phase by phase, and so to be able to give you all the information almost on a monthly or timely basis.
That's really good.
So, great.
Great work, Tanner.
So on the permitted column, it's just a yes or no, but isn't that going to possibly be variable based on the number of units? Because it's not like you're permitting all 53 or 165 properties, right?
That permitted column means has received, either started the permit process.
Okay.
Or received a certificate of occupancy for, for a permit for dwelling units.
Okay.
So let's say phase one was 100, that would tell us that 57 have been permitted at the, at the point of time that we update this.
Okay.
That's what that column will track.
Okay.
Because building permits come after final plat, and only after final plat.
Right, right.
So that's where that column, again, we have not got to that level of detail of checking permit log.
Yeah, I was just wondering if that's just going to open up people to wonder, like, how many have been permitted? You know, instead of, you know, instead of having a yes/no, putting like 52 out of 57, or 57 out of 100, or whatever.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm worried about, because like you said, if there, if development pauses, or, or because we're, because some of these units might be broken up in phases, there'll be a point to where, you know, we might see yes the whole time, but there's, nothing's been, you know, half the, half the townhomes have been built, for example.
Yeah.
So that's why, that's why I was wondering if that would be.
Right, so this column would be, you know, in this project, how many townhome units were approved.
Right.
Or available to build, 53. And then that would be either, I guess, I guess it kind of lends itself more to a number rather than.
Yeah, I think so. I think so.
Okay.
I think it's a little, I think you knock out two birds with one stone, because if there's a number, then something's been permitted.
Yeah.
And then it tells you how many, so you do, you know what I mean? You get answers to two questions with that one column.
Sure. And of course, part, part of what this will do is it will replace the development report that used to be brought to y'all on a monthly basis, which was kind of an output of the permitting software. Some of that had to be done manually, but some of it was generated electronically. Well, this is going to kind of replace that, because, you know, the data was a little bit specious on that. So this, again, will give us a better finger. And again, I'd love to turn this also into the single-family detached and be able to do that, but we're going to tackle townhomes.
Will you repost this on the website also?
We'll think about how we can do that. If this can spit out a graphic, we would, we could do that. And again, maybe it ultimately does replace some, some level of the development report that we did, though we've talked internally about doing a little bigger, bigger period, you know, either bi-annually, definitely annually, for that type of thing. But this at least allows us to have the data town-wide at our fingertip, which is what we didn't have so far. We have individual projects or subdivisions, but then we'd have to, like, literally mathematically add it all up. This is that spreadsheet that ties that together.
I think it's, I mean, it's just, I think it could be a good tool for the public if they look at the website and say, oh, well, you know, if I'm looking at going in here and, you know, and it's still got 150 units to permit, you know, do I want to live in construction for a while, or do I not? So it gives them an idea of how much more development's going to go around them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
What is the total number of townhomes on there? Do you have that tabbed at the bottom?
Let me see.
I'm just curious.
Jumping right to the end result, huh?
Yeah, right.
Well, and I think that's a pertinent, pertinent information if, if, number one, if this is going to just reflect, like, current development. I mean, I'm assuming that once something is completely done, it'll be pulled off of this list, because, or is it going to stay there?
No, the, the initial intent was, this is the entire picture on townhomes in the town.
Okay.
From, you know, the ones that reside behind us here, that have been built for many years.
Okay.
That, what's that little community off Old Rogers Road? If you know what that, that tiny little, that, yeah, the tiny little townhome community. We're including that one as well.
Yeah, okay.
So again, giving the whole picture about townhomes.
Yeah, then I think the sums for, for those, for those numbers would be helpful, just for.
It's not, when you select it all, it's not giving me a, a number, like typically Excel.
Yeah.
Do you know how to do it?
Click on the column below, hit the sigma button, and then boom, you're done.
You're asking me to do math here.
It'll automate, you're in viewing mode, yeah, I was going to say, you have to go to edit mode if you're going to.
I'll do it right after.
Yeah.
But it's clearly in the hundreds, just by some of these numbers here. Yeah, I would, I would guess this is 800.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20. Yeah, like, like, looks like about 2,000 actually. Just roughly.
So this is, again, things built on the ground, been there for years, and everything through rezoning entitlement, and everything in between, so. So those are the three things that I wanted to cover. Given us some update on Tanner's hard work.
I'm just curious, what is by corridor, does that break it out by what's going around Roswell Road, Mitchell Mill, and then downtown, so?
Did we start this one, Tanner?
When we get to that point?
The idea.
I haven't started that one, but I think on the overall, it says it.
Oh, there you go.
Corridors.
Yes.
I got you, okay. I didn't even pay attention to that part.
We looked at the general town map and where development's going, and said, if we could break this down into sub-areas, kind of where would they be and what would they be? So we made some determinations, this side of the bypass, you know, between the bypass and main was kind of a nice envelope along the major corridors of Burlington Mills and Rogers and Young, both north and south. So that was just some easy divisions. So we just tried to group that up there, so again, should it become a question of kind of where are they all going? And Tanner is working on a map of this also, he's mapping this. That'll be the next step. So it's like, yeah, so that, that'll help us a lot, both in the, in the corridor or the sub-area, where they're, where they're popping up and where they're going to be, or by, by that map will tell us.
And aren't you guys going to have GIS training too? Or I can't remember what the, what was going on with that.
So the town's GIS is currently in the hands of Bolton and Mank, the town engineer, to kind of get it straight, and we're getting close to republishing an annexation boundary map. And we're getting close to republishing an annexation boundary map.
Okay.
And then the zoning map, which is desperately needed to be republished post LDO adoption with the current up to date rezonings, which, you know, we just had a few just a month or two ago. So trying to get that up to speed with some professional help.
Okay. So that's contracted work right now or?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's the on-call town engineer.
Okay.
I guess that information would be shared with Wake County GIS also.
That's the entire goal because if you go to iMaps and you look at our zoning, yeah, it's, it's basically static since the LDO rollout in the summer of 2021.
Because there's a lot of information that'd be useful on that, on that system, I mean, including greenways and, I mean, just, I mean, all that stuff, so.
Yeah. We have to get our in-house done first and then we can talk to the county about making iMaps express it as well because we know that a lot of people go to iMaps as their first role. And it might be a while till the towns be able to publish more interactive mapping of all the features that, that folks who use iMaps are really used to.
Yeah.
Like all the Greenway environmental layers, the utility layers, et cetera.
Yeah. It'll be nice.
That's, GIS is a long-term project for the town.
Yeah.
Any other questions on any of this information? Thank you.
Thanks. Good stuff. Looking forward to it.
All right. Do you have any other planning director business?
No more business.
All right. On to the town attorneys report.
Thank you. Good evening. I do not have a whole lot to share. I just wanted to update you on one minor thing. We are finalizing an update to the planning board bylaws and rules of procedure. So that will be coming your way in the not-too-distant future for review. We're working with staff to move that forward and then we'll bring it to you all as well. Just wanted you to know that's happening and coming up.
All right. Thank you. I guess on to other business. I guess, Mr. Verstegen.
I guess I'll go to the podium for this. Do you guys care?
I probably, whatever these is on you.
Well, I, I think I have to because I think I'm asking for a vote and I can't, I have to accuse myself of the vote, so.
Oh. Jump up for one moment just to let everyone know how this came to be.
Let's go right ahead, please.
And then you, no, you hang out with me too.
Okay.
And you can help me out if I've missed anything. So Mr. Verstegen made a request to go to the town board with the presentation you were about to see. And our interim town manager believed it would be best for him to share it with the planning board first. It's my understanding it's not any type of official recommendation. Believe our town manager, interim town manager is looking for some feedback from you all if you think this is worth taking to the town board or, you know, suggestions for next steps. For example, another suggestion besides going to, directly to the town board would be, hey, go to the budget public hearing and say, do you all want to spend money on this? Something like that. Or you might think of something else that you would suggest that Derek do to move forward with this. So I'll, that makes sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone. Yeah, so this, this, first off, just for, for starters, this is not any kind of zoning proposal or any, this is all just cosmetic kind of decorative type of things for, for the town. So it's not adding any policies or making any changes to zoning, right? So just a kind of upfront disclosure on that. This is something I started working on last year and spoke verbally to a number of different people, former commissioners, current commissioners, other people in the general public. And got some pretty decent feedback, so I put together a little PowerPoint to, to kind of detail everything out as well as doing some initial research. I admit the research could go a little bit deeper, but for all intents purposes, I went as far as I felt like I needed to for the sake of presenting this in a, in a meaningful way. So when, when I'm referring to downtown district, it does sound like a zoning type of thing, but it's just for the lack of a better term to reference the area that I'm speaking of, which is the original downtown area. So with that, I'll start off with, with this opening. At some point after or perhaps before the town of Roseville was officially established by William Rolls, town commissioners and/or citizens themselves decided to erect two very distinct physical features to define the borders of the town. The first were four small stone markers placed in the ground no more than 900 feet from the center of town, the current day intersection of Main Street and Young Street. These markers effectively defined the original town. And the second installations were gates. The gates were installed a little further out from the town markers to manage access to the town. In 1941, the town boundaries were redefined as being one-half of a mile from the center of Young Street and Main Street, of the, of the Young Street and Main Street intersection. This coincidentally lines up with where the author of our past history in greater Roseville area describes the gates were located. However, there is no evidence to validate exactly what the town did in relation to this. Nevertheless, it is clearly, it can clearly be understood that two boundaries existed and both can be recreated to establish the distinction the town can use to further define its identity and character and origin. So hopefully most people know what this looks like or what this is. And I'm just going to kind of ad lib some of this because you've got copies of this in your, in your, in your packet and I can make it available to anybody else who wants it. But basically, in this, in the author of, of that book, these four points are kind of outlined, and this is how they're basically outlined in the book. And what I wanted to do was then try to figure out if I could verify that by actual physical record on, on the county or, or the town, and I was. So that, what was really kind of cool about all this stuff is not only seeing something in that book, but also seeing the actual evidence that, you know, that's, that wasn't anything that somebody just made up. And I'm not saying that they would have, but I'm just saying it's kind of nice to see and validate the, the things that you, you find in, in various different places. So two of these markers exist right now. I don't even know if the other two ever were in place, but based on the book and based on other physical records, it would seem that they would not have been in a place that you would have seen them anyway because they were described to be in somebody's yard. So I think those things no longer exist. But this is the marker that, that, this is one of the, the two features I talked about, the marker, and this is what it looks like right now. That's not what the gate looked like. I just picked that randomly out of some picture just for the sake of being representational. That's probably in Montana somewhere, so I don't know what kind of gate it is. I have no idea what the gates look like. I have no record of what the gates look like. It's just a gate that I used for visual representation. And again, based on the book, this is kind of where the book describes they would be, where they were, they used to be. And all of that lines up with, with documentation that I found on record in, in the county. And this is what it looks like. So, so the map on the right is 1941. The map on the left is our current day Google Maps. The blue pins are where the original small markers, the, the small granite square ones with the brass cap on them, that's where those would have been for the two that aren't there. And for the two that are there, that's where they are right now. Okay? So one across the street from the firehouse and one just down the road from Main Street Park. And then the, the brown marks on the, on the outside perimeter are the approximate locations of the gates based on the book and based on some of the other things that I found. So that's kind of the visual representation of, of what kind of evidence there is that all this stuff did actually exist. So this is the proposal. We're tearing up Main Street as it is, right? So I don't know what the plan is. I've been told that they're going to save those markers or they're going to work around them. I don't know how reasonable that is. But with all of that, one idea is to salvage both of those markers, take them out of the ground, put one of them and save them for town hall, either out, right out here for now or in the eventual town hall center in a glass case, just to kind of, you know, commemorate that. The other one could be donated to the Little House Museum for display over there, since they happen to be very close to one of those original borders. And then you would install four replicas of those in the locations designated by what we found on, on town, on the county site and all the evidence that shows where they originally were. So we would reinstall those. And then where those are in the street, you would just have like a, a narrow strip of like stamped asphalt or whatever that just kind of, you know, just foot wide or whatever, going right across just to kind of show where that original border was in the street. And then on the exterior, to kind of work with the exterior stuff, what, what the idea is, is to do two things, actually install gates in those same locations. I don't know what kind of gates. I'm not too worried about what kind of gates they would be because if they were functional, that would be one thing. But I know there's a lot of things you got to worry about if they were actually be functional. But if they were functional, then you would have an immediate kind of event space that you could create because you're essentially closing off downtown Roseville. So that's one idea to make them functional. But if they're not functional, then they could be decorative like the image I just kind of pulled out of nowhere, right? So we can have something kind of cool that people could then talk about and be like, oh, well, this is kind of neat. And it would be part of the stuff that we can include on a history page somewhere, either on the website or in some of the other organizational websites in the area. And the second thing with respect to the outer perimeter is to have the asphalt color changed from the normal black to that maroon asphalt color. Another just transition and visual indication that you're in the downtown district area of Roseville. And that would look something like this. As you come to this, this border, you can see the marker on the left-hand side. And as you would come to this border, you would have a nice little, you know, thing across the road that says, welcome to Roseville's downtown district. Or you can just have a hard transition in pavement. This is all just kind of ideas to throw around at people to decide what they think would work the best. But that would be that transition from the dark asphalt to the maroon asphalt. And I did the research on the asphalt. It's not that big of a deal. It's really just a matter of just asking the supplier to pick a different color stone, which is very common. So it's not painted, it's not doing anything like that. It's just a different color base stone that's being used for the maroon asphalt. And this would essentially what it would, would look like from, from, from the air, from an aerial. So you'd have the maroon asphalt in the downtown area, the downtown district. And it again, just as you're walking or you're driving, you have this kind of visual, you know, impression of where you are and you're in downtown Roseville. There are some funding opportunities. Bloomberg does a lot of outdoor art type of things, so if we needed some funding, that would be one source for it. But for all intents purposes, even just sourcing out some of the estimated costs for just replicating the markers, I mean, it's not going to be more than five or six grand, so it's not like it's going to break the bank. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to, to present this now because as we come onto budget season, I just wanted to give the town board an opportunity, if that's where we go with it next, to figure out where they could pull money from if they had to even allocate some specific amount for it because it's such a small amount. So that's pretty much, pretty much what the idea is. So I'm happy to answer any questions or, or comments about the idea.
Have you had any feedback from DOT about making these improvements to the roads? I believe Maine and Young are DOT maintained streets.
They are. I haven't, I haven't spoken to DOT. The, the people that I've spoken to is the Roseville Downtown Developer Development Association. They all saw this a week ago and loved it. Roseville Historic Society loved it. In fact, at the meeting that we had yesterday, Zebulon and Franklin County was there, they all really liked it too. But no, I haven't talked to NC DOT about that at all.
I think that would be my biggest concern. I know DOT gets a little funny sometimes when you use different kinds of asphalt because it does need repairs and they're responsible for it.
Right.
And then the gates would have to be within the DOT right of way. So that means DOT has some pretty strict rules on what they allow within their right of ways as, as far as approved structures. So that is, I think, to me, it seems like there's a lot of questions that might need to be presented to DOT to see if it's even a feasible option.
Okay.
To do.
I have no idea how to get in touch with DOT on something like for these kinds of questions. So I don't know if that's a staff question or if that's something that I need to explore or, I don't know.
Probably the district engineer's office where I would start.
Okay, okay.
I've got some numbers I can send you for DOT, have their whole chart for all of North Carolina.
Okay. Appreciate that.
The question is, if you're going to change the color, where's a quarry that has red or maroon stone near here? I believe it would cost significantly more because your transportation cost to bring stone, I'm not sure of a quarry that has red stone anywhere close. There's some blue gray stone that's different in Granville County that, that's there, but mostly all the other stuff that granite and what's approved is typically that gray like we have around here.
Yeah.
So you, you could incur some additional expense of, of repair or even construction because it, it would be that transportation to get the right stone.
Right, right. And I think that's something the, the Main Street contractor could probably help us figure, help me figure out, right? Would that be?
I think probably, I, I don't, I don't know if your next step is to take it to the board or if that's what you're asking for tonight, but I think the town board would definitely do to the budgets, well, this would be a, a next step process even before getting in touch with DOT would be, that'd be my suggestion because that's going to be, you know, the town, the town project's been in process now since what, 2018 coming through, finally coming to life right now.
Right.
It's been, been well in the works and budgeted for many years. So then to throw this in there, not saying it's not a bad idea, just saying that's going to be a whole, that could be a game changer on budgets for sure.
Right, okay.
So I think that would be something to take to the board just to get their recommendation before we even bother DOT would be my suggestion on that.
I thought about that as well, the number of years that we've already been in the process. And in here you have the town could budget the estimated $1 million cost. So that's, that's a cost that you believe this, this project would cost?
Oh, that's probably, no, I don't think that's going to cost that at all. I think that was meant to demonstrate that Bloomberg has that kind of funding available is what I meant, is probably what that meant to.
So have you put any numbers together to figure out approximately what you think, even with gates that you envisioned, you know, not?
I, I haven't put any costs together yet because I really just wanted to get a feel for whether or not anybody felt like this was worthwhile, you know, you know, effort, which is kind of what I was opening with is just kind of like, here's an idea and if it's worth it, then if people feel, feel it's worth it, then, then I'd like to, to pursue it more. So if that's what you think the town would want to know, you know, coming into it, or would they want to just see it and then say, you know?
That's, that's a tough call, but I think with it, the Main Street already being designed and in progress?
Well, I've, I've talked to, who did I, was it Mike McFarland? I think I talked to him about, I think it was him. But what, I, because I was, I mean, I was obviously concerned about the fact that the project's underway too. And my understanding is that at a, at a certain point, you still have the ability to make change requests into the, into that process.
Okay.
So I think, given that we're so far out from paving even remotely, that there would be enough time to, to figure that part of it out.
There would be, there may be enough time, but is there enough time to apply for the grants? I don't know how long that process is.
Yeah, right, right. If, if we, if the grant money was something that we needed, then that would be a consideration if, if there were some additional costs that, that I don't think would be there, but if there were, you know?
I think, personally, I think, you know, if I were commissioner, I would, you know, I was getting this presentation, I would at least want some rough budget numbers, you know? I don't know if the contractor will be willing to give you some cost on what that red asphalt would be, because, and it would be a change order, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be a little more than the regular, you know, black asphalt that they mix up down the road.
Right.
So, but getting some ideas of, you know, what kind of cost, additional cost.
And the upkeep, how, how, how many years down the road would that have to be repaved? And, and how much is that gonna cost? Because, as you know, we got, we have to look at the numbers now, but we also have to take into consideration, how, how long is that gonna last? Is it gonna fade quicker than the black is? And in five years, how much money do we need to redo that? So I think those are, the more information that you have that you could come with, the better it would be for you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like the whole idea of just having that zone, right, where you're coming across, and even if you can't do everything, even some of the items in there, like the stones, right, the, if you can't do red asphalt, because it's just too much and too expensive, is there where you can just do pavers in one spot, where it's like you're crossing?
I think I read that.
Yeah, yeah.
Crossing, go over into that, into that zone.
Marker for a border, a little two, three foot.
So invisible, like you're driving, there it is, I know.
Yard, like the Indy 500.
Yeah.
I think, I think in Wake Forest, they've got some crosswalks with that red, and, and theirs isn't really red pavement. I believe it's more of like something they put down and, almost like a thermoplastic type of material, yeah, they heated it into it and pressed it into the asphalt. But it, it still has a, a life expectancy. You can see some places it's coming up where cars turn a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
And then when they've had some waterline leaks, now it's, now it's black squares in the middle of it.
The one word for me would be the gates, because there's always that, you pointed out, the DOT restriction, and there's height and width, and so do you limit all of a sudden what can go in and out based on the height? We don't have that many. I don't think the fire truck's even that tall.
Yeah, well, I think the, I think the four marker posts would probably be your easiest putting those out.
Right, I figured that, and then...
But the gates would probably be a stretch and probably the red pavement through town, but probably a two, three-foot strip. So maybe just get that in consideration when you're presenting this and pricing it out to, to take it to the, to the next step.
I do like the idea of a gate, but I don't know if I'd put it in the four corners. Like, is it something you could represent? Like, if you could ever find the original look of, of one of those gates and it was ornate, could you put it up at the park?
Okay, right, right.
This is a replica of blah.
Right.
Is, putting it across the road is gonna be painful, I think.
Well, and that's why, like, that's why I wasn't really thinking of something that was overarching, just, just a swing, a swing gate. And that's why I was saying, you know, if, if anything, it could just be decorative as, as a symbol and to associate the town's original border, not necessarily be functional. But I understand that, and I, I understand the DOT concern, too, because if it's, if it's in the DOT easement, then a car can hit it, right? So then there's that whole issue, too, right? So I understand the, the certain things that are around it, but that's kind of the idea is it doesn't, doesn't necessarily had to be functional, but if it was something within reason to be functional, then it could create an event space pretty easily, since we close the street down for certain types of events anyway, and that would be one way of accomplishing it, if, if it could be functional. So that's kind of where those, those thoughts were going. So, but I appreciate the feedback. That certainly gives me enough to, to work with, even kind of maybe setting, setting the, the, the request up in a priority. That way, the easier ones, like the markers and, and the, the crossing thing is kind of an easy give-me, and then the other ones might be things that would be harder to accomplish or require more work. So I could certainly arrange it that way as well, so, so that if there's something that they want to pick out, they can pick which ones they want versus which ones they don't even want to deal with. That, would that make sense, too?
Yeah, I just, like, the original border you showed, like, it's so small.
Yeah.
Compared to the, the town now, right? It's just fascinating if you've been walking along and obviously you're like, this is the edge of town back then? Yeah, it's way the heck over there now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it was pretty neat to find, find that map, and there's a bunch of other maps that, that have been scanned in the county system, so it's pretty neat stuff.
And one thing to make, you make consider is, is a, if, you know, the funding and the, and the costs get too high, it might be something to be kind of decorative signage that could be put up, so, you know, original limits of the town or something.
Yeah, I can, I can put that in there, too.
At least to identify those areas, just so it doesn't get swallowed up with history or with time.
Yeah, I like that, too. I can, I can do that as well. I can put something in there, so, so as another one of those alternatives to, to that, it's having a, a signage there.
I just, I just deal with some asphalt a lot, and I know those costs will surprise you.
Yeah, no, I, I, yeah, I know, that's, that's why, that's why I want to talk to you guys about it, so I can know where to go. So appreciate that. Cool. Thanks, thanks a lot.
All right. All right. Anyone else have any other business?
I do.
All right.
I need to let everybody know that as of June 1st, I will no longer be in the Roseville ETJ, so this will be my last meeting on here. I have, after 63 years, I'm leaving Wake County and taking a walk on the wild side and moving about a half-mile into Franklin. So, so anyway, I will be closed, but I wanted to say thank you to everyone for allowing me to be on the board. I've enjoyed working with y'all and whatnot, but it, it happened on Friday, so, anyway, I thought I would just let you know while we're here, so thank y'all.
Oh, we appreciate your service to the town.